I don't, I see Commissioner DeBonne online virtually and I don't know if Commissioner Chang is planning to join as well. Would you like me to go ahead and get started or do you want to pause a minute and see if we have?
It's now eight oh one.
Okay.
We can pause a minute.
Okay.
It seemed like it took me forever to get to town today and it wasn't like we had rollovers or anything. It was just, oh, I don't know. That construction out there is getting quite.
I see Commissioner Chang just joined and I did see. So I'll go ahead and I think we were planning, we have a few items listed in this week's bill report that we'd like to flag for discussion for commissioners. But before I dive into that, Doug, anything from you at a broad level or any specifics?
Yeah, we're at that point in the session where things have gotten a little bit crazy. There were basically no hearings this week. The intention was for the House and the Senate to hold floor sessions on Monday and Tuesday and get through a long list of bills. Unfortunately, Republicans were staging kind of a slowdown in the process. And we're speaking on every bill, referring a lot of bill, trying to refer bills back to committee, pull bills from committee. So there were essentially, I think maybe three committee hearings, including Ways and Means Committee hearing yesterday that passed House Bill two thousand and two, which is the abortion access and gender affirming care bill. And then there was a joint committee in transportation last night, but it has been very, very slow, not a lot of people in the building because there haven't been committee hearings. I've spent most of the days in the building, so it's been a good opportunity to chat with people. But it is, it is that time of session when, when things get a little bit crazy. Reportedly, the Republicans and the Democrats have an agreement to put off the abortion bill until the beginning of May and also put off the gun bill until the beginning of May. So that may allow for things to move more quickly on the floors. So just what does that have to do with us? Well, we had a hearing scheduled on Wednesday for House Senate Bill six forty-four with the amendments that we supported on the ADU and rural areas. That bill got canceled like other bill and now will be up hopefully next Wednesday. So the extended floor sessions, the long debates are pushing everything back and delaying action on things that need to go through committee. So stay tuned. The, the House was scheduled to have a floor session today and tomorrow they are in session starting at nine o'clock today. Caucuses are already meeting, which is why we won't have members here today. In the Senate, and there will be no House floor session tomorrow. In the Senate, they canceled floor session today. They'll come back on Monday, but the senators are traveling to Newport today for the Ways and Means roadshow hearing in Newport. So, so although typically we have legislators here, I, I gave them the day off since they are either traveling or on the floor in caucus and we'll catch up with them in, in a week or two. So, quick update, but we're halfway through.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll go ahead and dive into the bill report and our kind of items that we have flagged for today unless there are any specific questions for Doug.
I think Commissioner Chang.
Doug, can you give us a sense of where that drought package is?
Yeah, Commissioner, thanks. Great question. Thirty-one twenty-four is the overall drought package. It is, the, the specifics of the package aren't actually contained in the bill. So if you look at the bill, you won't see a lot of the specifics. But the specifics are in a, what will become an amendment or become a variety of bills passing through the Ways and Means Committee. That, that bill really is a funding bill. There is, you know, well over two hundred and fifty million dollars in projects in that bill. And so really that becomes an item for the Ways and Means Committee after the May revenue forecast decide how much money they have, can they afford it? And then that discussion will lead to, okay, which projects can we afford? I would be very surprised if all two hundred and fifty-three million dollars of funding proposals in that bill get through. However, I've spoken to the co-chairs of the Ways and Means Committee in the last couple of weeks. And I think there is a recognition that they want to do something on drought issues. So I would expect something to pass. Probably not that exact same list. In the package are a variety of things that impact Deschutes County, including money for DRC, money for the, the Triton, well, the ten counties that are going to pursue, pursue stream restorations for Juniper issues. And, and some money for projects specifically in Deschutes County. So it would be a good bill to pass, but like all the funding bills, we're gonna have to wait until the May forecast and see how we're doing financially.
What day in May is that, Doug?
We will know on May, May nineteenth, although typically stuff leaks out the day before. So we may know if the revenue forecast is up, down, or flat by the eighteenth or nineteenth of May.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, Nick.
Thank you. With the, with Senate Bill six forty-four scheduled for a public hearing and work session next Wednesday, how fast might that get to the, to the floor, just given, as you said, in early May, the big topics could, could resume and then potentially stall? Any, any hope of getting that to and through the four, the, the floor before the big topics may, may slow stuff down again?
Yeah, Nick, that's, that's my goal. That's what I've been pushing the House to do. I'm, I'm hoping that that's the case. I'm very happy the bill isn't going to Ways and Means because it might get stuck down there with the several hundred other Ways and Means bills. But I am hoping we can get that bill through the committee within the next week and a half. And then on to the very long list of bills awaiting action on the floor for today. Starting at nine, there are close to sixty bills on their list. And they were moving quite slowly. They had through four bills on Monday, four bills on Tuesday. They got through eight bills on Wednesday, so they doubled their output. Got through a few more, I think eighteen or nineteen yesterday, but with new bills coming fast and furious out of the committees, they're, they're going to be pretty far behind by the time they get to this. But I, I would hope that we could get it out before the, some of the controversial bills hit the floor again.
Oh, um, didn't you mention a problem yesterday that, what was it? Lane County wanted to do another amendment or something? And were you able to override that?
Yes, that's correct. So Lane County, which asked if we would consider reducing the lot size for an ADU from two acres to a minimum of one acre. And, and we had discussed that earlier and decided for a variety of reasons, it didn't make a lot of sense at this point. They came back kind of without asking us and started going to House members and asking for that amendment. My, my concern with that is kind of piggybacking on what Nick just said, which is I don't want to delay this bill any further. You never know what might happen at the end of the session. So the quicker we can get six forty-four is amended out. And, you know, into the Senate floor and the governor unamended, the quicker the process will be. If we amended it, it would have to go back to the Senate for concurrence. Who knows how long that would take? That would add days or weeks to the process.
Not gonna happen. I, I just, I, every one of those technical, of those committees, meetings I sat in for years, one thousand Fred was crystal clear. You go below two, two acres, they will unleash everything they can to kill it. I, I'm sure that position hasn't changed.
Right. Yep.
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, to, to the mix of this, if, if this is still going through the House Environment, Energy and Climate Committee before it goes to full House vote, I had a chance to speak with Representative Marsh, the, the Chair of that committee la Monday. It seems like it was a long time ago, Monday, and she a hundred percent is supports the bill, a hundred percent understands the history of, of the evolution of the bill from the original version, which she had concerns about to the current version. And, you know, she'll do everything she can to kind of move that through, move that through her committee quickly.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Commissioner. That's helpful.
Okay, I'll go ahead and dive into this week's report if that works for you, Chairder.
Oh, of course. Thank you.
All right.
And happy birthday, Eric. Tomorrow. What a lucky guy.
It's April fifteenth. I'm really upset because you always remember tax day, my birthday, born to be a bureaucrat, but now like tax day is April seventeenth and they moved it around on me.
No, isn't it actually what they do on the eighteenth this year?
Yeah, yeah, eighteen, right.
Yeah. Oh, wow. Lucky. Happy birthday. Go ahead, Whitney.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner. There, I'm gonna start on page eight of this week's report, which is we've added House Bill thirty-four forty to this, to the report this week. We've, staff has added this as a priority to not reviewed for discussion by the board this morning. Commissioner Chang, I was planning to, to turn this over to you as you've been involved with this bill, if you'd like to, to provide some introductory remarks related to, to this bill.
Sure. So I pointed out a while back that Multnomah, Multnomah County has the flexibility and option to do something that we are currently not able to, which is retain and pool the receipts from tax foreclosed properties and use those to address youth and family homelessness. And so, you know, I spoke with a number of elected officials from various taxing districts around the county about this. We all wrote a letter to our full legislative delegation from Deschutes County and Representative Levy was kind enough to carry a bill that would essentially give counties with two hundred thousand people or larger the option to use those tax foreclosed property receipts for a variety of purposes, could be those original purposes set out by the legislation that Multnomah County got passed, or it could be broader. And it also includes mineral revenues. So you, we would have the opportunity to use mineral revenues in the same way. And I, I don't fully understand where that, that component came from, but you know, that my original interest, which was, you know, having the opportunity to use these tax foreclosed property receipts to, to put a meaningful dent in youth and family homelessness is, you know, kind of the heart of that bill. And we just saw in the bulletin over the weekend, you know, an article emphasizing that Deschutes County, Central Oregon, have some of the highest road rates of unsheltered youth and family homelessness in the entire nation. So, you know, very timely article that, that emphasizes the potential value of this piece of legislation. It is, it is an opt-in type opportunity. So we don't have to do this unless, you know, critical mass of the taxing districts in the county say, yeah, we'd like to do that.
And if I could jump in, I'll just give a quick update. The, this bill passed the Senate, the House floor fifty-two to zero with seven absences and now heads to the Senate. I've talked to Senate leaders. I expect it to probably move quickly and pass and go to, go, go to the governor's office. So there was very little, little opposition during the debate on the bill. This is an FYI.
Commissioner DeBonne, I see you, I think, speaking, but we're not hearing you. Okay. So I think staff can leave this in the position it's in or based on direction from the board, we could update priority and position accordingly. So just kind of looking for feedback on, on next steps related to, to what you'd like to do with this bill.
It was already the news of the morning on K B N T as I drove to town today. So, and it said, you know, that it added, because it's over two hundred thousand, it adds to shoots, laying Marion, of course, it was only, but then it's Clackamas and Washington too. They'd said originally that it was only Multnomah. So it sounded like it's going ahead.
And I believe there's an optional provision in there. So it's not something that would be mandatory. Counties would decide at a county, by county basis.
Good.
Okay.
And, and I would picture that, you know, if this bill passes through the, the Senate and goes to the governor's desk and is signed, then we would convene, somebody would convene a gathering of, of the taxing districts to discuss whether we wanted the county to opt in on this or not.
Great. And then we could, we could find out what the projected funding would amount to.
And Christie, I see you have a hand raised.
Yeah, I just had a question. Do we know if that's would be like an annual opt-in or you opt in once and it's set kind of, you know, moving forward? Do we have any details on that?
I don't think the legislation specifies that.
Cheyenne, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm curious if we have an estimate of what type, what amount of revenue this would provide for our county based on past.
I see Robert down there. I'm sure he's got a number for us. Don't you, Robert?
I, I asked, I asked Christie and in the past I asked, it may have been Greg, I'm not sure, you know, where along the way, but, but to, to share some, to compile some previous years' numbers for, for me. And, and Christie may have that information. It's, it's complicated because there's what the sales are for a given year and, and what we actually collect in a given year because we help to finance a bunch of these purchases. So what we're actually collecting on a given year is, is is debt service essentially from, from prior, prior purchases. But maybe Christie could kind of give us a, a, a sense of some of that.
I can speak to the current fiscal year. So our auction was last October. Our gross proceeds were seven hundred and two thousand. From there, we had cash receipts of about four hundred and something. And then the rest, about two hundred and something was financed. So after we're made whole, the counties made whole with expenses, that would be about two hundred thousand that could be distributed. So, but that doesn't take into consideration any current, any loan payments from prior auctions. So that I'm just speaking of the current fiscal year.
Great. And Christie, I'm remembering, I think I'm remembering correctly that when we first spoke about this, there was a potential, either an option or an idea to reserve those properties for use for solving youth and family homelessness because one of the big challenges that we see is lack of housing and that could be an alternative strategy. Does this bill allow for that use of properties that way? Or is that something that the county decides without state intervention?
So current O R S allows the county to utilize tax for, tax for closed properties for like affordable housing, childcare, open space, green space. So the, the commissioners have a lot of latitude with that. But just keep in mind, a lot of the property that we get through foreclosure, we don't get a lot of houses. We get a lot of unapproved property and a lot of times those properties have issues like egress or encroachments, things like that. So not all the time, but often they're not real viable. We do have some in inventory that, you know, for instance, that drawing a blank of the, of.
No worries.
What's that?
No worries. We don't need to dig into it. I, I was mostly curious if we should be pushing for the bill to include an option to reserve those properties for that use. But it sounds like most of the properties don't meet the needs.
Yeah. And again, we do have some in inventory that could meet the needs in, in, in terms of improvements, but, or, you know, development, but we don't have a lot, like we have like one house or inventory right now. So a lot of them will just have to be improved.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
And Christie has showed various affordable housing developers through the inventory of these properties in the past. So, I, I mean, we're they're, they're on the radar screen for people. And if there was strong interest, then we, there would be a discussion with the board.
Okay, thank you. I think for this week, we'll plan to maintain current priority and position on this one and keep it on the report.
Moving on to page ten of this week's report, community development, we have a flag on Senate Bill six forty-four, a recommendation that Doug had sent through electronically that we adjust position to support given recent amendments to this bill. So just wanting to flag that suggestion and bring it before the board for your consideration that we adjust position on that bill.
And I'm sorry, Whitney, what are we adjusting it to?
It would be an adjustment from currently the position is neutral with amendments and it would be adjusting that to a position of support.
I'd support that.
I would hope so.
Okay. Just wanting to confirm, we don't like to touch the report unless we are pretty explicit with you that we're gonna do so. So we'll go ahead and do that. And then moving into page eleven of this week's report, we have two new bills that have been reviewed by the District Attorney's Office. And I, we wanted to, I think we have staff online today from the office to kind of discuss the proposed priority and position on these. So I'll turn it over to the DA's office to talk about Senate Bill five eighty-six and Senate Bill fifty-five oh five. Good morning.
Good morning. So Senate Bill five eighty-six, I think, is the simpler one to talk about. It, it creates a requirement of confidentiality for restorative justice communication. So if you have a restorative justice program and the offender makes statements to the, to the providers or to the group, there's a level of confidentiality that's created and that's an important thing so that participants feel like they can share openly with the people who are, who are providing services to them. The, the problem that the district attorneys around the state have with the, the proposal in this particular bill is that the confidentiality is is too broad and the, the provision for reporting is too narrow. And so I've updated the, the notes in that section to, to reflect what the district attorneys and, and I believe the, the protection should be, which is much more narrow, or, or so much broader in terms of DAs or staff being able to report a threat to groups of people or lower level harm. Currently, the, the restriction only applies to, or the exemption only applies to threats to particular individuals for, and threatening to cause serious or substantial bodily injury or death to a person. And the district attorneys believe that any threat to a group of people or causing harm to individuals should be exempt from that. And that's similar to the therapist's client privilege in Oregon. In fact, that's identical to the therapist's client privilege in Oregon. We, we believe that that should be the, the way that this bill is carved out. And the reason that this is important is that the Criminal Justice Commission is conditioning grant funding to programs that respect the, the privileged communication aspect. They don't want DA's offices, for example, to be using statements from participants to charge them with crimes. Okay. Questions about that?
I'm, I'm sorry. So could you remind us what the recommendation is for?
The, the recommendation is to support with, with amendment to, sorry, to to allow the program to report the threat of a crime, even if it's not to a particular individual, or if it's a, just to cause harm to an individual. If somebody says, I'm gonna go out and find the first you name the group, a member and beat them up. Currently, under the language here, the, the program would not be able to report that because it's confidential. But my belief is that the, the program should be able to report that threat to law enforcement so that there could be intervention.
Doug has his hand up.
Hi, haven't followed this bill. So the first time I saw it was on this list. Just looking at the, the history of the bill, it's already been on the Senate floor and it was sixteen to fourteen. All the Democrats voted yes, every single Republican voted no. What, what was the controversy on the floor that led the entire Republican caucus to oppose the bill?
Yeah, I don't know either.
I, I don't know. I, I would imagine that it's the, the topic of restorative justice in general is, is not attractive, maybe, but or it may be that because the Oregon District Attorney's Association didn't support the language in this particular bill that that, that held sway. I don't know what the answer is, though.
Yeah, I'll poke around a little commissioners and, and just maybe go back and watch the floor debate on this one and, and see if there are any other issues raised that might be a flag or something we ought to consider.
Thank you, Doug.
It was on the floor. It, it was a while ago. It was on the floor on the seventh, so last, a whole week ago. Yeah, last Thursday, Friday.
That'd be great, but I, I'd also just like to say that I, I support the, the, our district attorney's philosophy on the balance between privacy and security in this case as well, from the way it was described. So I, I would, I would, I would support the position to support with amendments.
And I think I'm actually seeing our district attorney at nine fifteen this morning. So maybe you can enlighten me a bit. And, and I would like to hear from what Doug's finding why the split was, in the vote was so apparent. And what about the other bill then, five five oh five?
The five five oh five bill is a funding bill for the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. And from, from my point of view, we support that. Our office depends on grant funding through C J C to a good extent. Kathleen Meehan Coop is here and she can tell you about the programs that we have that rely to one degree or another on funding through C J C. And if C J C is adequately funded, then our programs have a better chance of being adequately funded.
So we're involved in a number of programs. So our emerging adult program is funded through the C J C. Our marijuana project that we work with, the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office and Bend Police Department is funded through C J C. Tanner may be able to also talk with, since I see he's online as well, our justice reinvestment funds for the county come through C J C. And we have a new equity project that we're partnering with Community Justice with on two that has a, it's a small grant, but it's also funded through C J C. And all of those are currently on their budget for this year. And the funding for this particular bill also funds their operation costs to actually run those initiatives.
So my recommendation on that one is to support the, the funding bill fifty-five oh five.
Can I, can I ask one question about those C J C programs? My impression is that Deschutes County is viewed as an innovator and is securing maybe a larger share of those C J C grants, you know, is more successful with those C J C grants. Uh, CJC grants, you know, is more successful with those CJC grants than, than other counties. Is that, is that accurate?
I think um, that's probably fair. I know at least with um, the emerging adult program and um. The illegal marijuana market enforcement project, we do get a higher amount. The restorative, um, I'm sorry, the. Justice reinvestment funds, for the most part, that's a formula grant based upon. Um, so we get our percentage just based upon the size of our county. But we, on the, those other two, we are one of the um, like, let me, I, let me rephrase that. For the emerging adult program, we definitely um. Got a higher end. I think Multnomah County got as much or in that same ballpark as us for the um. The marijuana funding, for the illegal marijuana, that one, um, some of the smaller counties sometimes. Depending on the year, sometimes actually get more funding, but they do look at us as being innovative and we've gotten some funding to do different things. That they don't necessarily always um outline specifically in the RFPs. But because we've always produced what they've been looking for um and gone above and beyond, they have been flexible in allowing us to try some different activities.
Well, i- i- if this is funding that is core to our work at, at parole and probation. And allows us to do all these innovative, cutting-edge things uh at the DA's office. Um, and, and we're kind of securing a large, we're, we're uh. You know, punching above our weight in terms of securing these funds. Um, at Deschutes County, I, I, I would see no reason not to strongly support uh. You know, support that budget as well.
Doug, do you have any uh feedback on this? What type of funding did they get before? And is there a number anywhere?
The number right now in the bill is a placeholder based on the, the governor's request and the final numbers will be worked out after the main revenue forecast. Uh, I would assume, but I will note that um, you look at uh OLS, there's quite a bit of um. Support um, including from rural counties and urban counties, including Wasco County. Uh, Hood River County, Lane County. Um, et- et cetera. And actually, um, we submitted. We submitted a letter on the fourteenth on this in general. Based on the uh community-based treatment supports and services, the impacts funding. So we've already weighed in on. Uh, a portion of the funding within this larger uh uh bill. And that letter was sent on February thirteenth, so it's been a couple of months, but. Seems like longer ago than two months.
Right, okay. Thank you. So yeah, I think we should leave it at support and we'll see. What the revenue forecast is.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we're gonna leave um Senate Bill five eighty-six kind of in that pending status for the time being and we can come back to that at a later. Meeting if that sounds good to you, uh, by Sherter.
Um, right, I, I just said support. It sounded like Commissioner Chang was supporting it also. It shows up as support the way it is now, and we've already sent a letter. That seems to be consistent.
Right, and we will make sure to confirm a position of support for fifty-five oh five.
Right.
Okay, um, moving into behavioral health, I think we inadvertently flagged a bill on page thirteen. That has already been reviewed, so we're gonna move past that. I did wanna pause on page fifteen of this week's report. Um, earlier this week, Jen had sent a draft letter of support uh that relates to House Bill thirty-one twenty-six to the board. Um, and I, we just wanted to follow up on that uh request to uh potentially. Author a letter of support in coordination with Saint Charles and Janice. Potentially, I think a reminder from you on kind of the substance of this bill might be helpful. Um, I know that I think you spoke about it the last time we met, but maybe just a refresher.
Uh, this is a bill that basically would establish up, up to four, possibly more. Regional child psychiatric units. It's really to, intended to address the fact that. There is very little residential psychiatric treatment for children and children are lingering. Um, days and weeks in EDs, which are not really appropriate settings to treat behavioral health conditions for kids. Um, the bill would need funding associated, so obviously it's a bill that has fiscal impact. But it was one that we discussed and I believe there was support and I was asked to draft a letter. Which I did. Uh, I reached out to Saint Charles as part of that process because they've been working on. Setting up an inpatient residential treatment program potentially for children to address the issue that they're experiencing in their own ED. And uh, Dr. Shane Coleman and Molly and their legislative liaison all supported the letter, reviewed it. So what you have in your inbox, if you have it, I don't know where it is in the process, is the letter that was co-drafted with that group. And um, given that there was a sort of subtle. Um, suggestion that our region would be a good candidate for such a facility, it would be. Um, really a great thing to have our county commissioners and hospital co-sign that letter. So that's what you have is an opportunity. Uh, I think the draft is with Whitney or with Jen.
So where's the draft of, yes, I do believe that this letter, we need to sign it and. If they can actually set up four in the state, that would be um, a miracle. And I would be, yeah, it would be a miracle and I'm all for doing that because. You know, having children sit in the emergency department for days and weeks is just not appropriate.
Thank you. Um, we will recirculate that and get hard copies in uh the board's boxes and then potentially bring this back to. Under other items on Monday, just to finalize if there are any proposed adjustments, as long as Janice's that timing feel okay to you? Monday afternoon?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't think there are any hearings set. I think it's probably with ways and means, and I think the forecast will impact all kinds of conversations, so. We'll see.
Do we know the dollar amount? Is there a dollar amount anywhere now? No, it's all like sky?
I don't, let me take a look at some notes and get back to you if I have more information about a dollar amount, but right now I don't know.
Doug, can, do, do you have any, any other kind of legislative history, legislative forecasts? You know, information for us about, about where this bill is and where it's been and um. A- actually, I, and you had shared with me um, some information about uh, the sponsor. Um, uh, which I believe is Sanchez and kind of her, her role in ways and means and what, what that might mean in terms of probability of funding success.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in on this. Uh, thanks, Commissioner. Um, I think thirty-one twenty-six has a very good chance of passing. Uh, you know, there are, just on our list, uh, bills that are kind of related to issues. Uh, uh, kind of along this topic. You've got twenty-five fifty-seven, twenty-seven seventy-three, thirty-one twenty-six, twenty-five forty-four, twenty-six fifty-one. And twenty-nine sixty-three. I probably missed a couple, all of which are addressing behavioral health issues. Uh, workforce issues, et cetera, all down at Ways and Means, and there are probably a dozen more in the same vein. So um, they all require money. Um, but I think kids' issues are. Are going to rise to the top. Uh, just this past week, Morrison Family and Community Services announced that they're closing their residential program. In Portland. That's uh sixteen beds. Uh, that has been used for these very same children. That means more of these kids are going to be at uh, in the ERs. Uh, Morrison took kids from around the state, including kids from Deschutes County. Uh, so um, you know, the, 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 the Senate in particular has launched a uh, a war against. Community providers uh imposing ridiculously onerous regulations and red tape that is driving them out of business. And yet they act surprised when uh, there's no space for them and kids end up out of state in hotels or in ERs. It, it's really. It's been a foolish set of bills that the Senate has passed over the last eight years. And that's exactly why this is happening. So, so that's uh, um. I think that there's a very good chance this bill will pass. I think it's the wrong solution, but it's the only solution we have at the moment. Uh, you know, we shouldn't have these kids in our ERs in the first place. Um, we shouldn't have to set up, you know, these. Centers at, at hospitals around the state, but the state has so damaged the residential children's provider networks. Uh, that we're faced with this, this uh very expensive, very difficult choice. So. That's a long-winded response to your questions, Senator, Commissioner, but uh. But uh, but I think this is an important bill and, and as you mentioned, that the co-chair of the full committee, Tana Sanchez, is a sponsor, so. I think it's got a pretty good chance of, of moving.
Thanks.
Perfect. We'll follow up um on that letter here today, and then again with the board Monday afternoon. So, thank you.
Thanks.
That is, oh, God, Janice.
No, I said, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, that's everything that I have flagged in this week's report, but wanting to open it up to departments and offices. If there's anything else that you uh would like to raise, uh, please feel free to, Robert.
Thank you. Uh, Doug, I'm wondering if you've heard anything about House Bill twenty-nine eighty. Um, that is related to uh Oregon Business Development Department setting up a three hundred million dollar revolving. Loan fund for program under which. Cities or counties may award grants to housing developers for certain cost to repaid loans from tax increment financing. Uh, I mentioned that they originally uh met with the assessors and treasurers in uh. There wasn't uh agreement and, or support really for how it was structured. And so they went back to amend it. They just came back this uh last Thursday with an amendment, so. I didn't have a chance to review it before making it into this report, but I just wanna flag it. I'll put comments on it for next week. Um, but I just wanted to know if there was anything. Uh, is this moving forward? Cause there was a lot of discussion that they didn't think it, who knew, who knew if it would move forward or not?
Yeah, um, tell me the bill number again, cause I'm familiar with the concept, but.
Yeah, twenty-nine eighty.
Oh, twenty-nine eighty, yeah. Um, I'll just, it is uh, it's always means like everything else, um, and it's a funding issue. Uh, but housing is certainly a priority. Um, I remember the, the testimony in this one and it was. Um, largely in support. There were a few people who were opposed to it, uh, but it was largely in support and um. Um, let me see here. It seems, there was an amendment, yeah, there were two amendments. The last one was adopted on uh, on the fourth, so just last week. So I'll, I could send you a copy. But it wouldn't be a bad idea to add it to our tracking list if that's something you wanted to do.
Yeah, I'll add it um on there and just so the commissioners and everyone knows, it's, it's one of the concepts where uh loans for. Giving developers fifteen thousand to thirty thousand per uh unit building, uh, unit F, but it would come from. It would reduce the taxes that would go to the districts, except for fire districts, they would remain whole. Uh, it's actually kind of complicated, uh, not as straightforward, but um, it's one of the, one of those concepts.
Yeah, this is a bill that is, now I'm thinking about it, is uh, received a very good hearing. Uh, there's a good bipartisan list of sponsors. The Senate chief sponsor is Dick Anderson from Southern Oregon, the coast, South Oregon coast. Republican and the, the House chief sponsor is Pam Marsh. Um, and this came out of um, I think some of Marsh's conversations with her Phoenix talent. Wildfire impacted areas in her cities.
Great, thanks, Robert. Anything else from departments or offices?
I, Whitney, uh, for Community Justice, uh, DB, I'm ready to weigh in. Uh. We've our uh, the statewide budget forecast for state for community corrections, and it was nine million dollars less than. What was uh forecasted in the governor's recommended budget. And so uh, we're, we're being in the future to get some approval of one of two things. Uh, a staff uh letter that is asking for increased funding. Uh, state legislators, uh, the board would decide and/or approval for Deschutes County to. Uh, also. Get on board with OACCV's letter that they most likely will be requesting the same thing. Working Deschutes County for OACCV to ask for increased funding from uh the state legislature. We're gonna see some significant impacts in fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, we've. Uh, done our best to hold the line uh with future expenditures, and so that's gonna save us on the next two but, uh, two fiscal years, but. Uh, we're seeing a problem in this year twenty-six if we don't have an increased statewide funding. That's done by uh allocation, uh, formula-based allegation, allocation.
Thanks, Tanner. Any feedback, commissioners, on that, those two requests?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm very concerned about adequate uh support levels for. Uh, adult parole and probation. It seems like these would be good things to support.
Did Tanner actually um give a bill reference, Whitney?
It, it, it's not a bill, it's, it's essentially, Commissioner, we're asking for a letter. To uh give out at the legislators, to sit around the state legislators. And/or uh participate with the OACCV letter that will be going around for support or increased funding statewide.
So, Whitney, is that something you can follow up on?
Definitely, if the board um would like to, you know, is supportive of these efforts, we'll coordinate closely with adult P and P and community justice. Um, on making sure you're, if the letter is going to be, I think I heard you mention Tanner, potentially. Uh, a county letter may be signed by the board. We'd coordinate with you on that in terms of next steps, but. We would also be providing the department authorization to move forward and work closely with. Their association at the state level to sort of pursue um additional funding, support for additional funding.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
Is there anything else? I, um, I didn't know if Chris Duddy was on the call or not. We did actually have a presentation yesterday in COAP. And what's going on in California um regarding electric trucks, electric vehicles for trucks. Um, it was quite enlightening. Um, so in the next meeting for COAP, we're going to bring in DEQ. But in case, I was just wondering if Chris was on, if he could maybe just give us a little update. Apparently, if something gets passed in California. Oregon passes it too.
Yeah, so there's just some, you know, California's taken a pretty aggressive stance on electrification of the transportation system and, and that's. Transitioning into, to heavy fleet. Um, it's uh. It's a little hard to understand at this point, given the, the lack of infrastructure to support. Uh, the amount of electrification that uh, that is somewhat being required by, by some of the standards. Um, fear is that it's gonna roll into Oregon much sooner than, than we're prepared to deal with it, and so. Um, informative presentation yesterday by a couple of industry folks. And uh, yeah, I, I don't suspect there's anything um brewing legislatively in the near term in, in Oregon. Uh, there's been a lot of uh diesel-related uh legislation that's, that's been here and there. Uh, but nothing that uh will, that seems to wanna um, address what California is doing in, in that front in the near term.
Chris, didn't they say you could only use a snow truck for snow? You couldn't be flexible, wasn't it? But that, that didn't have to be an EV, is that, did I miss inter- uh interpret that?
Yeah, it sounds like in California, there's rules that exempt uh snow plows from being electric. Uh, but other than that, it's, it's a pretty aggressive electrification of, of heavy fleet, so. Um, we have a lot to learn um as to, with regard to what, what's happening there and, and how it may affect us. Uh, but it was pretty, pretty concerning. Just giving costs and, and preparedness.
Yes, they did say though that school buses were really actually the good idea because they sit during the day, so they can actually be recharged. But for trucks that are driving through spray or whatever, uh, it could be, could be a nightmare. Yes, finding those charging stations when you can't even find a restaurant. Um, and is there anything else today? Whitney, did you see any other hands raised?
Nope, I think that that's all that we have today.
Great, good. So we will have our meeting then next uh Friday, the twenty-first.
Yes, that is our current plan. Um, and we've made that adjustment to the first uh Mondays of each month, so we have canceled those. Yes, that is our current plan. And we've made that adjustment to the first Mondays of each month, so we have canceled those meetings and they should no longer be on your calendar.
Okay. Oh. Yeah, wish me luck. I am having lunch in Salem on next Friday with the governor's housing director. Yes, Doug? Hopefully I can be there unless there's another blizzard. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you. Good weekend.